Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. We have eight councilors present. Is Lisa on there? Is she there? She is not. Okay, we have eight councils present. We do have a quorum. Next on the agenda will be comments from the councilors. And I would like to read a statement at this time. "To the residents of Lawrence, this past week has not been productive for the councilors. You elected us to work for you, and we, the councilors, expected a good work relationship with the city's administration. But what happened was not what we expected, such as no budget as of today, a new controller that no counselor has met. Considering this is budget season and the councilors have not been able to ask questions as it relates to the budget, this is uncalled for. But we are asked to approve claim vouchers, ordinances, and resolutions for the administration, all without looking at a monthly budget. Other departments suffer because of this lack of transparency. The chief of staff, Greg Goodnight, said a draft copy of the budget would be ready on September the 5th. You heard him say no when asked by Councilor Giles on the September 2nd council meeting for a copy of the draft budget be given to the councilors as well. It didn't happen. The council hired a municipal advisor. He was approached by the administration, and then he withdrew his contract with this council. We have not been able to move forward forward this budget season, and all we ask for are tools to work with to get the job done for the residents of Lawrence. There were emails this past week of concerns going to the mayor and from me. As of today, there has not been a written response from the mayor regarding my concerns. Because of this lack of transparency, I will do a press release to inform the residents of Lawrence of this council's work efforts. The council should not be in this predicament. However, it was a choice of the administration to not give this council the tools needed to get their job done. In conclusion, this council will work hard to get the job done and utilize other resources. And to the mayor, you were on this council for eight years. Remember, the council approves the city's budget, which can be reverted. The council approves vendor payments, and the council approves the administration's requests for ordinances and resolutions. You don't ignore this council." Betty Robinson. Anyone else? Yes, councilor.
No, 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 I'm fine, no.
Madam President, colleagues and constituents, I feel compelled tonight to address a deeply troubling situation that has come to light. As many of you know, this council hired an independent financial advisor to provide guidance and clarity as we navigate the budget season. That advisor has now withdrawn, not because of any workload amount, but because of direct harassment and intimidation from the mayor. According to the advisor's own words, "The mayor approached one of their other clients in spoken a way that was malicious and damaging towards their firm. And as a small, family-run business, they did not have the capacity to endure that hostility and field harm to the other client relationships. This made it clear that the environment created by the mayor was simply too hostile for them to continue. This is unacceptable. The actions of the mayor have directly undermined this council's ability to perform our duties and stripped us of independent expertise we sought on behalf of the taxpayers. This is not transparency. This is not accountability. And this is not good governance. Instead of working together for the betterment of our city, the mayor has made it harder for all of us to serve our constituents responsibly. The people of Lawrence expect cooperation, not intimidation. They expect integrity, not bullying. And then they expect their leaders to strengthen oversight, not actively sabotaging. I am upset and disappointed by these actions, and I believe the public deserves to know exactly why their council has been left without financial support we contracted for. This is the opposite of the values we should be upholding as public servants. Thank you."
Madam President. Yes, counselor.
Thank you. Last meeting, I had made a statement, and I guess maybe a criticism of the administration, in particular the mayor, because we're in the height of the budget season. And we're actually, in my opinion, well past due being within the budget season. As some of you may or may not know, I've been on the council for a while. And they... History has always shown that we have always had a mayor involved in, you know, our budget process. And the... At that last meeting, I made a statement that I did not want to speak to a subordinate because I don't feel that we're getting the straight facts from subordinates because of fear of retaliation. I know several of the city employees, and I've known them for a long, long time. And I feel that, you know, they fear to speak openly to us for fear of retaliation. And I laid an example out. The former DPW director, which was someone that was fired for retaliation. The chief of staff, Mr. Goodnight, corrected me towards the end of the council meeting, stating that that was not true, that he was fired for other reasons. Well, just to make sure that I didn't speak in error for something that was on the record, I called the former DPW director, and he confirmed that, in his opinion, that is exactly why he was terminated, was for him speaking out about an issue with finances over a stormwater issue. So, just for the record, I wanted to clarify that. And he also stated that, you know, the mayor attends public functions, and I totally am aware of that. We see her at many public functions. And... But what we don't see here, we don't see her right there at that podium. Because I think that the facts need to be straight from the person from the top. It doesn't need to come from a subordinate. And so, that's why, you know, I'm not trying to be mean to her. I'm not trying to embarrass her or intimidate her or whatever. But we need to speak to the leader of the city. And if the leader of the city is not willing to speak to us, then I... You know, it's new territory for me. I'm not sure where we take it from here. But anyway, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, thank you, counselor. Anyone else? Okay. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Copies of the agenda are located in the back of the meeting room. Any citizen wishing to speak under citizens' comments later on the agenda, please sign in using the sign-in sheet located in the back of the room. Now, we will have the approval of the minutes from September the 2nd. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Zach has already done it.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you.
You guys are using the system on me here. Okay, let me catch up.
It's all good. I'm telling you, we are up to date.
Okay, so we can just vote?
A vote.
All right.
It says I voted.
We're voting?
Passed.
Passed. Okay. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute. Is there a discussion? Okay, we've done it. Okay, it's done. Wow, this whole thing. This one? Okay. The vote was eight to zero. Thank you. Cross out. Reports of committees? Do we have any reports from any of the committees this evening? Okay. Unfinished business. Unfinished business. Proposal number three. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the ordinance into the record?
Proposal number three, 2025, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Amending Title I, Article II, Chapter V of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lawrence, Indiana.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance was referred by the council to the committee of a hold... Committee for the Hold. This item remains pending at the committee level for further consideration and recommendation. The council will consider action on this item upon receipt of the recommendation from the committee of the hold. Do the councilors have any questions or comments on that? Okay. Next, we have new business. We have five items to consider under new business. We will begin the council appointment to the Redevelopment Commission. The council has one appointment to make to the Redevelopment Commission. I will seek a nomination for this appointment from each of you. After the denomination window closes, I will ask each of you to state on the record by roll call the nominee you would like to appoint based on the list of nominees received. I will call the roll in alphabetical order based on the names of the councilors. The clerk will keep track of the votes.
Madam President, could I make the nomination of Becky Parker?
Seconded.
Okay. Dominique, are there any others? Okay. Madam Clerk, can you read the nominees received for the record?
The nominees received for the Redevelopment Commission is Becky Parker.
Okay, the nomination window is now closed. We will now proceed to a vote. And we'll use the... Oh. There it goes. Okay. It passed eight to zero. Thank you, everyone. The next item under new business is the council appointment to the Utility Service Board. The council has one appointment to make to the Utility Service Board. I will seek a nomination for this appointment from each of you. After the nomination window closes, I will ask each of you to state on the record by roll call the nominee you would like to appoint based on the list of nominees received. Okay, Counselor Freeman?
I would like to nominate Tracy Boyd for the Utility Service Board.
I gotta get used to this. Oh. Okay. Okay. Madam, are there any other? Oh, it's been voted on. Thank you, councilors. Now you can vote. Are there any other nominations? Okay, there are none. Okay, now we can vote. Okay. Passed. Passed eight to zero. Thank you, councilors. Next, we have a rezoning. Madam Clerk, would you please read the petition number, address, and request for the record?
Twenty-five dash Z O nine... I'm sorry, Z O N dash zero-two, sixty-four fifty Oaklandon Road, rezoning from S U dash one to C three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The rezoning petition has an advertised public hearing that has been noticed for tonight's meeting. Counsel, before we proceed with the public hearing, I would like to ask for a motion to consider the following rules governing the public hearing. One, petitioner's presentation must not exceed ten minutes. The combined total time limit for all members of the public speaking in favor is ten minutes. Three, the combined total time limit for all members of the public speaking against is ten minutes. Four, there shall be a five-minute time limit regarding additional comments from the petitioner. Five, there shall be a combined five-minute time limit on all additional comments from members of the public speaking. Do I have a motion from the councilors? Someone? Motion? Zach, okay. It's been motion and second. Thank you, councilors. Now we need to vote.
We're just doing the rules.
Rick, they're waiting on you. This is only voting on the rules.
On the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay. It passed eight to zero. Thank you, councilors. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay. I would now open the public hearing. The floor is now open for the petitioner to present the rezoning petition to the common council. Please present... Please give your name. And note your presentation must not exceed ten minutes. You may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of council. For the record, my name is Andy Wirt. I'm a land use professional with the law firm of Church, Church, Hiddle, and Antrim with offices at Two North, Ninth Street in Noblesville. Here tonight on behalf of our client Vista One Hundred LLC, which is Scott and Melissa Perry, who are in the audience, also would be tonight as an attorney with our firm, Jack Witsett. As your agenda indicates, we are proposing a change of zoning for what amounts to a little less than half an acre of ground just north of the Oaklandon... The historic Oaklandon Unitarian Universal Church on Oaklandon Road. This ground has recently been acquired from the church, hence the need to change the existing S U one special use zoning to C three, which will align with the surrounding zoning classifications. Our plans are to demolish the existing commercial building to the north, that's sixty-four fifty-eight, and build a new building potentially containing a restaurant and another retail use. Additional accessory parking will be provided in the rear that would be shared with the church. I believe you have a copy of our proposed building elevations. This is what Mitch Design has put together for us and does represent substantially what we intend to develop. We have discussed our plans with Mayor Whitfield and her chief of staff, Greg Goodnight. With that, I conclude my introductory comments. And as I mentioned, Melissa and Scott Perry are present. Either myself or Perry's will have happy answering questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Hello, I'm Zach Kramer, District Five. This is in my district. I'm very interested in the outcome. I do have a couple of questions. What type of restaurants and retail tenants are you targeting, and how will they align with the neighborhood's character?
I may have specific projects. Scott, if you might come in and kind of addressing that.
Hello, counsel. Again, thank you for your service, for being public servants. It's an honor to speak in front of you. Right now, it's still early in the phase of the process. I'd really like to do a sit-down restaurant. It's going to be a six thousand square foot building. The idea is to conform to the historic nature of Oaklandon. I grew up playing on the park, the old wood park in Oaklandon, growing up as well as my wife. So, the downtown Oaklandon area is near and dear to our hearts. And so, we want to be very mindful of keeping it the feel of Oaklandon and not changing that. And so, we really like to go after local businesses. Again, we haven't pursued anyone specifically. For me, it'd be something like a restaurant, maybe a coffee shop, something like that that would enhance the community there. Currently, Tam's is the only eating establishment there, which I frequent with my wife. And Tammy and Norris, we all have a great relationship as well. So, just kind of uplift the community like that.
Got you. And if you don't mind, if issues with traffic or drainage or any sort of parking after construction, what commitments will the developer make to work with the community to resolve them? I know you said you were going to be sharing the parking lot with the church next door. I could see Sunday mornings, if you've got a restaurant, a coffee shop, and you've got people coming to church, that area is a one-way, each-way. It can get congested. Do you have any plans to overcome that?
We do, actually. So, I have talked to Mr. Goodnight, as well as the mayor, about this. And even actually the previous chief of staff, Leandre, as well. And some of the previous staff members as well that are no longer with us. And we have... There's actually an access easement to add another entry off Oaklandon Road. And we all decided that we don't need any more entrances off Oaklandon Road. It's already dangerous enough. So, safety is the number-one concern. So, the current goal is to actually... And the chief of staff, Mr... Greg, I call him Greg. He has committed some funds to improve the street, to potentially narrow it, and also between the original fire station and the office building across the street. That opening is very wide. And people... And also Jamie, the neighbor, who is with Al, previously Larson's. You know, he says he sees almost a potential wreck a day, kind of thing. It's very... As everybody knows that travels Oaklandon Road, it's very dangerous. So, we've been very diligent trying to figure out how to solve that. And that is to potentially bring the road in closer and then adding maybe even street parking. And we have some diagrams that the city has looked at as well. City being the mayor's office, I should say. That we'll put crosswalks there. And then bring... If we can bring that office building there, if we can kind of square that off, and we've gone out there and measured. We don't have any drawings of yet. It's still fresh. The idea is to make it actually tighter, more of a downtown feel, to slow the traffic. Because not just the traffic problem that a new building will create, but there's already a traffic problem. That's very dangerous. And if you want to park at the church and walk to the park, you know, there's probably one in ten chance you're going to get in your miss. And so, very dangerous. So, we want to make it safe for the community. And so, that is our... Again, grew up playing on the park myself and from the area. So, we want to make Oaklandon safer in that way. And that's been needed... That's been something that's been needed to be done for a long time.
I have a question, if I may. I'm Rick Wells with District Two. You mentioned you're going to be serving donuts. So, would this be an all-day restaurant? You know, lunch, supper? Or is this just a breakfast donut place? Or...
So, we actually don't have... We just want to keep it local. So, I haven't mentioned donuts yet, but that's okay. I may have misspoke, so I apologize if that's the case. But hopefully, it'll be an all-day restaurant, seven days a week. I know Tam's closes at two o'clock. And so, if there's something there that... An establishment, it's kind of a food desert, almost. And so, really, the vision of starting this whole project in the first place. And we've been very involved with the church as well, obviously, in purchasing the property. And we've shown them our whole vision of how to, you know, try to make it safe for Oaklandon Road, as well as bring more community events. And so, Charlotte, who's the president of the board, we're in communication regular. The church actually voted on some of the things we're doing already. And so, we're going to stick to that because we made the promise to the church. So, they've seen these drawings. I presented in front of the church. And we've committed to take a long-term commitment to Oaklandon.
I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
This is... You're going to build a brand-new building, I take it, right? Ground-up?
Yes, sir. We actually went out with multiple contractors. We've been doing real estate for a while, more the single-family and smaller buildings. And we brought multiple crews out. And the current... It used to be the stained glass shop. And we have had many quotes. And it's actually more expensive to fix the current building than it would be to build a new one. And honestly, it wouldn't be safe. The foundation, if anyone's walked by it, there's... One of the walls is very... It's in rough shape. There is a basement if you walk in there. Some of that is caved in. And so, it's actually very dangerous. And I think it would be... Essentially, if you were trying to rehab it, to keep it the same footprint, you would actually end up building a new building anyways. That's how far gone the current building is.
And one other question. The facade of your new building... You know, Oaklandon is kind of a... Kind of a small-town, homey, you know, feel. I guess that's what I always come... When I was, you know, driving through there. Is your facade going to blend in with, you know, what's there now? Or, I mean, have you guys considered that?
Yes. And that was something that the church was very adamant about, and I agree as well. And I say I, we here, agree that we want to... Again, we want to keep the historic feel of Oaklandon because it is... I know that the mayor has now changed from town to neighborhood and all that. So, the idea is to keep it the historic feel that it is. And actually, one of the projects that we'll be doing is between the church and the new building, there'll be a large walkway. And we're going to do a community garden there as well. The church has always had a vision... And actually, the current rezoned parcel that we're talking about actually used to be owned by the stained glass shop, and it switched hands many years ago to the church because one of their visions was to do a garden. And then it came down to finances. And so, I said, okay, how can we honor that long-term vision there? And so, there's... I don't know if you guys have seen community gardens, but... Excuse me. There's community gardens. It's a culinary garden, excuse me. So, actually, it's maintained by a chef. And then the idea is that it will be produce that they can do special events with at the restaurant. So, that's kind of... If you look at culinary garden, there's a couple of people that are local that do that. So, again, trying to get the community, you know, back into it.
Go ahead, counsel.
So, if this is approved, I'm hoping that, since sustainability is very important and the motto of the city of Lawrence is "Live Longer in Lawrence", and it would fit in really well with your culinary garden that you would have pollinator-friendly plantings, reduce your turf grass as much as possible, and make it sustainable, and reduce chemicals costs by lawn care, equipment, and make, help us live longer in Lawrence.
Yep. And you're actually hitting on one of my wife's favorite things right there, is at our own home. We don't spray either. We have a garden of our own in the back. My beautiful wife makes homemade bread. So, yes, that's, and we're, one of the issues is, it is very tight downtown Oaklandon. One of the things is the zoning laws allow, actually, the easements are much smaller, which is helpful in that scenario. Because one of the issues is so much green space, drainage, as Mr. Kramer mentioned earlier. I'd like to plant some trees as well. I don't know how that's gonna, we're trying to make it, we're trying to make it fit. So, honestly, that's, that's the limiting factor, is the space. And the original building we proposed to the church was 7,500 square feet. And they made a good point that that's gonna be probably too big, and not allow some of the other things. And so, that's what, we agreed to bring it down to 6,000 square feet. So, that should give us another 1,500 square feet of ground. With the goal is to plant some mature trees with some picnic benches. And that way, on Sundays, the church can sit out there, as well as the people frequenting the establishment.
Thank you.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes. This building is considered an historical site?
The current building is not considered a historical building.
The churches.
The churches, yes.
Is the church being destroyed?
No, the church will be staying. Yes, it's been there since 1800. So, we definitely wanna keep the church. And actually, the height of the new build has been talked about with the church as well, because of the stained glass on the north side, to not, to be able to allow the sun to still go through the stained glass. So, again, we're trying not to disrupt the feel and the historic feel of the town, or, excuse me, neighborhood.
Would you, would you be interested in installing chargers for EVs?
Yes, that would be, we support that. I honestly don't know anything about the charging stations themselves. I'm not sure how that works. So, I could definitely look into that. But we're very supportive of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. How are you dealing with the landfill? That area used to be a landfill many years ago? Are you aware of that?
I think that was just down the road, I think that was behind, farther. I'm not familiar with that. But I do know, the church and the stained glass, so the stained glass shop used to be the pharmacy of the town. And that was the early 1900s. So, that's as far as my knowledge goes back, ma'am, back to about 19, I believe it's 1902.
Do you know how to find out if it was, and how you're gonna deal with that?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have already done a Phase 1 inspection with EPA, and they've come back with no issues. The only issue, well, I shouldn't say no issues. The only issue they came back with was across the street, which is now the office building. They're the two stories opposite of the fire station. That used to be a gas station way back. I've talked to the owner of that office building, and they've actually already done all the groundwork for that, have all the documentation, that the soil's been examined, and that there's no contaminants in the soil. So, we are doing a Phase 2 inspection on, hopefully, next week, probably not next week. But we're, that's the goal. I don't see that happening next week. But hopefully, by the middle of October, we'll have the Phase 2 inspection for the EPA. And that will tell us that. And that includes a soil sample. So, they'll be able to, I'm not an expert on that, but I believe how it works is they dig down and take some samples. But I'm definitely not the expert.
Okay. May I ask a question?
So, with your current idea and plan for this, you guys are anticipating using Church Road as your entryway?
Correct. And again, that's just to make less entries, because there, that's...
Yeah. I was just making sure I heard you correctly. And then, you would enter the restaurant and retail from that backside where the parking lot is?
Correct. And then, talking to the mayor's office, we can get about four parking spaces on the, on the street.
Okay.
I was actually, I didn't love the idea at first, but when we measured it out, it actually makes it, it's kinda counterintuitive, but it actually makes it safer, having a street park.
Oh, yeah.
Which, to me, I don't, it's like, well, somebody's getting out. And I mean, you know how on Oaklandon, they just, I mean, 100 miles an hour as fast as you can. Why should you leave the train tracks?
Right.
So, that has actually been in the conversation since the very, even talks of starting this project, is the traffic. We will be repaving the church as well, as part of the deal of buying it. We're gonna wait until all the construction is done that way. It's nice. So, it'll, so the grade for all that will all be 1, so it'll be contiguous.
Okay. And then, just a curious question, like, what sort of retail ideas are you guys bouncing around in your head?
I really like the, I really want some restaurants, and maybe some coffee shops. I know Tam closes it too. I don't wanna compete against Tam either. But again, and I don't wanna speak on her behalf, so I'll let you ask her questions if you want. But she's very familiar with the project, I'll just say that.
Yeah, I go there a lot, too.
Yeah. And so, I'm actually meeting with her, I believe it's next week. And then, Melissa and I, and Tam's husband Norris', which is, if you, the Norris hash is my favorite. I didn't realize when I met Norris', I was like, "Oh, you have your own food." So, it's very good. But we frequent over there. So, we're actually, we're working on a project together to actually provide more seating at Tam's as well. Because I know it's small, you know, 780 square feet, and on the first level. And so, we've got some ideas over there to maybe make that, be able to handle more people.
Right.
Make it a more, maybe even do, they're thinking even maybe doing some weekend events over there and stuff. And then, Charlotte, with the church, they've been kinda leaning into doing events in the parking lot, as we work through that.
So, before we know it, we might have like a little Oaklandon small-business community.
Oh, I'd love that. I mean, that's kinda the, hopefully, it catches and that's kinda brings it back. I mean, Oaklandon's always been a cool, a cool spot. And it's just, and it's in the right spot, 'cause you've got all the monies that's going into Fort Bend, which I grew up hiking on, even when it was military base, you know, going out to Duck Pond. And then you've got McCordville, you have all that, and then you've got Geis', but there's really nothing, right? I mean, Tam's is it. And so, the idea is to bring more, I don't like saying business, but things for the community to do.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor of?
Oh, Madam President?
Madam President.
I have one final question, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, Zach?
It's really quick, you might not have to come up. So, if everything went the way you wanted it to, how fast, what is the timeline you're looking at?
Without going into it, I appreciate the first statements I heard. I've experienced the same at the beginning of this meeting. That's our problem right now. And so, I don't know. It'd be awesome if it was spring. But we face some of the same problems in certain offices as well. And so, we're, we're actually in the waiting room.
I'm sorry.
We're trying.
I didn't, I didn't.
Test the machine.
Oh.
Councilor Jennings?
So, what is your problem again? I'm sorry.
So, kinda the long-term vision is, we, our passion project is actually not this project. It's actually to rebuild the park. That's what we like to see, as well as redevelop the fire station. Because what I told the mayor was, and I was out there when it happened, there was a windstorm, it blew the shingles off the fire station, they were laning the road. And I sent a picture, and I said, you know, "It's gonna be really hard to have people sitting out here." The project cost is gonna be almost $2 million. So, it will have to be successful, and we don't wanna build a $2 million building and then have it fail, because the rest of the town is on hold because of things I won't talk about here. Because if that happens, then you just have another vacant building. And we don't want that either. And so, it's a very, it's been a PhD that we're paying for, so, in this process. But I will say, it's, we have a desire to redo the park, as well as across the street. And that has been, I'd say politely, but not really, tabled, not even open for a conversation. And I said, "Well, it's gonna be hard for somebody who's sitting in a..."
I have to call it order. It's not germane to the hearing. I appreciate it. And I know he was asked, but where he's going right now, it's not, it's not germane to the hearing.
Right.
Okay. But hopefully, we'll go to this.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I wanted to, so we can keep it, keep the hearing moving forward.
Anyone else wanted to, wants to speak in favor of the rezoning? Okay. Now, we hear anyone that would like to have a remonstration towards this rezoning? Anyone against it? Come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Kim Richardson. I live at 6371 Oaklandon Road. I wanna make it clear, I'm not certain that I'm actually against it. I, the project sounds great, but there's a whole lot of uncertainties as far as what they wanna do, that it seems like the plans should be firmed up a bit. They don't know if it's gonna be a coffee shop, or a restaurant, or a donut shop. I, you know, the street parking, it wasn't clear what street. Was he talking about Church Street or Oaklandon Road parking? I understand it's for the community of Oaklandon, but I wouldn't really consider it a food desert, because there are restaurants right there at Pendle and Pike, up at Fox Road. So, again, I'm not, I'm not 100% against it. But I guess I just wanna understand what's going in there, because it just isn't very clear. If I could get more of an understanding, it's just a restaurant and some type of retail. But then, when questioned about what type of retail, he mentioned a coffee shop. So, I guess I just would like a little clarity.
More clarity.
A little more clarity of what's gonna be in there. I don't wanna make the same mistake that you brought up. But I have concerns about when I hear rebuilding the park. So, I don't know where to address those.
Only, it's the issue about the park. This is about, it's in a public hearing about this. But I got a question about, to her about this project.
Yes.
I guess it's kind of a mixed question, too, 'cause it might be to them as well. The story you were mentioning, the restaurant TAB or TAM, I couldn't...
Tam's.
Tam's. I've never been there, I need to check it out. Is that the only restaurant, retail, that's currently in, right there?
Yes.
I still thought, okay. Once you get past Pendle and Pike, okay. I thought I heard you say that it's less than 1,000 square feet? The Tam's place across the street?
780 square feet.
Okay, so I thought. So, I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a two-bedroom house. But you're gonna build 6,000 square feet? But the, in the warehouse before, the glass shop was 7,500 square feet prior that you're tearing down? Is that what I'm hearing?
It was 1,800 square feet, sir. We, I was thinking about originally presenting a 7,500-square-foot new building in the, what we're talking about today.
Okay.
And then the church was concerned that that was gonna be too close to the church.
Okay.
We went out and measured it, looked at it.
Okay.
We didn't want it to be too close.
Okay. So, I wanted to try to also, I'm trying to get your understanding of you. First, unfortunately, I think you didn't say where you live.
I'm sorry, I thought I did.
Yeah. Oh, she did, I didn't catch it, I'm sorry.
6371 Oaklandon.
So, you're right there.
I'm a few blocks, well, not a few blocks, a few doors.
Few doors down, I imagine, okay. So, what I'm getting at is, I'll be honest with you, I live on the more the western part of Lawrence, and tend to be on the more the western part. But when I do ride through there, I always think about the quaintness. Is that the proper word? And so, what I'm getting at is, I wonder, would you feel like you're losing that quaintness when everything is 1,800 square feet, old house conversion, 700 square foot, you know, to now, we're going to 6,000? Even though I'm not saying that 6,000 is large, but in comparison to the community, is that your concern? Or, because I don't have, I don't frequent it, and the people I represent, I don't really think does. But I'm trying to understand your concern in the shifting of the community possibly.
Right. I guess a lot would have to do with the facade, how, you know, what the exterior looks like.
Did you see the diagrams? Did you guys do public notice hearings in the community, I imagine?
Yes, I received the public notice, but I didn't see what the building would look like. I received just the aerial photo. But one of my questions, I guess, what kinda hours would it have? Is there going to be alcohol served?
How much lighting is it gonna have, right? That would be a concern for me if I lived there in the parking lot.
Yeah. And the play park is just kind of catty-corner across the street. And, you know, I just have concerns, because there's a bunch of kids there.
Another question I have, because I think you might, I don't know if there's any other resident, 'cause, you know, I'm answering this here. Do you have any concerns about what, since right now, he doesn't have an exact business he wants going, which is common, right? He may, he's, I assume he may, you know, he may lease it, you know, find, leasing space, I imagine, right? But is there any certain types of retail, traditional retail or restaurant, that you would like not to be there, that we might be able to put some conditions on, to not box him in, but, but put some guidelines where he can do good business, but not offend the community?
Definitely nothing like...
Well, maybe you guys could get together and talk. I mean, it doesn't have to happen right now, right here, right now.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't, those conditions, whatever, it doesn't have to happen right here, right now. But maybe we can start to have a conversation? And maybe we could get something, you know, and maybe help move forward? 'Cause I think it's, I think, like you said, you think it's a, it's a good, you're not saying it's a bad thing.
Right.
You just don't want it to turn into a bad thing.
I don't...
And these look like good folks that don't wanna do bad thing either.
Yeah, I don't want it to turn into something where it's, that it's a late-night place.
Right.
And it just gets loud. I mean, it's a sleepy little town after a park.
But there are places in Lawrence to get coffee. There's no place in Lawrence to get a good steak. Now, I mean, you know, and I tend to like that after 5:00. Now, I'm just saying. Anyway, that's my two cents.
So, this is Oaklandon Road? We, this is the stretch of Oaklandon? Well, as I said, I can't really say whether I'm for or against the rezoning. And I understand he's in the research phase, and he's looking into everything.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
I'm so sorry. You're gonna put multiple businesses in the 6,000 square feet. How large will the dining room be? Because if the dining room is most of the building, that might dictate to what type of restaurant would go in, right? A small coffee shop would need 5,000 square feet, or per se. So, if you helped us know that, that might also put some parameters without, you know what I mean? And give you some assurances as well. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my mind.
No, I understand. I mean...
I think we can win-win here. That's really good.
I agree. I think a restaurant over a coffee shop, I, you know, and again, this is really the first I'm seeing this. And I did receive the letter, I read through it. I just, and I had a little trouble hearing everything tonight. I was trying to understand, yeah.
This is a concept, a restaurant and a retail.
Okay.
It's just one idea.
So, 1/3, possibly, for the retail, 2/3 for the restaurant, yeah. And, but just, because people do walk up and down Oaklandon Road. And again, one of my, my main concerns, and maybe if I can have a conversation with you afterwards about the whole play park thing, because that's really near and dear to my heart.
Ms. Richardson, we do have one more question.
I forgot about the time. I'm sorry.
And, yeah, you can talk with, with him afterwards. Can we get your question, but we're gonna have to move it on?
Right, quick, I just...
Go ahead.
I must say that I do live around the corner, and it would be nice to have a steak place to eat as well.
That is topical.
However, as someone who, I think you mentioned something about making that parking lot maybe multi-use, maybe outdoor events, something like that. And for me, that's a bit of a concern, as someone who has been in that business of doing music or something like that, and how that might be a bit unneighborly, if it was a, like a small concert or something like that.
If I, so that's just before the building. So, after the, it won't be in the parking lot. That would not happen after the building's built. So, that's just, the church had a jazz concert on June 20th. And they just wanna have a little tent out there to kinda have some food and stuff like that. It is a small, yes, we don't, we don't wanna be having rock and roll in the arena. That's not, that's not the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
And I just have one comment.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any comments from the public on the Microsoft team?
Madam President, there is not.
Okay, do any councils have any questions or comments relating to the rezoning petition?
I just wanted to say to Ms. Dixon, you're here, you're advocating for yourself and you're asking questions, and I applaud you. Like seriously, we need more people to get involved in these processes, and I love to see you. So you're, you're seeing your herd.
Okay.
Am I too late to make a comment in favor of it?
We can go back, yeah. Yeah, probably, it's still open, you can step up. I, I got you, I got you.
My name is William Mullinow, my wife and I own property across the street and down a little bit, 6421 Oaklandon Road. And we're in favor of it just because it's helping enhance Oaklandon. The empty lot doesn't add anything. And the Godward Glass Studio building, unfortunately, it's obviously not structurally intact. The facade of the building collapsed a few years ago and fell into the street. So there's obviously structural problems with that, so anything's going to be an improvement over that. And from what I understand, the empty lot, many years ago, like maybe 100 years ago, there was a storefront there that burned down, and that's why that lot is empty when everything else on Oaklandon Road is occupied. So it's not taking away from the historic characteristics of Oaklandon. It's actually restoring the commercial, what used to be a downtown of Oaklandon many years ago. So that's why I'm in favor of, anything's better than nothing in a collapsing building, so.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I understand there's a representative here to present the City of Lawrence staff report on rezoning petition 25-ZON-02. Please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, Renee Raffler, Director of Public Works. We receive all of your zoning petitions and put together the staff report for you just to give you some guidance on some information that we have available to us. I wanted to restate that the church at 6450 Oaklandon Road is in, is considered a historical property. And this building is within the historical district, but it is not historically significant. They do still have to go before the Historic Commission and get a certificate of appropriateness before they'll be able to do anything with the building. Demolish it, build the new one. It's going to have to con, not conform, but complement the other buildings that are historic, okay? So that is going to be a requirement. Counselor Giles, you had a question about lighting. That is something that I look at when I'm reviewing the plans for the development. So that will be looked at. The Marion County zoning code is very specific on the luminants that are allowed to be present and that that has to stay confined within their property. So that is something that we look, we look at their landscaping plan, we do a drainage study. They have to do all of that, there's a checklist before they get permits to start doing any work. And that's part of what I do. I, I check all those things off and make sure that everything complies, that they have all of their paperwork in order. So be sure that that will happen. We have had several meetings, the administration has, and we are in support of this petition. We would like to ask, though, that you ensure that the building and the development is similar to the conceptual plan that they provided. Doesn't have to be exact, but we would like it to be similar to what they've provided. Just because that's what they're presenting to you for your consideration and your approval. We want to make sure that we don't get too far away from what you guys expected. And we would also like to see consideration that there's a timeline when this has to happen or it goes back. And we, we suggest two years, 24 months. That is up to the council, though, that is what our recommendation is. Did the council have any questions about this matter?
I'd like to ask if Mr. Woodson, would, would your client agree to those conditions? Was there any? I thought, you know.
I would, I would say.
Can you come to the podium?
So we purchased the, the Glass Studio two and a half years ago. So I actually thought the building would already be up, but, you know, so it goes. I would say the concern that we would have on that is the, is the two years, it's not that we're against that, it's just the resistance that we have had practically to do anything. And, and not from, right, she's been awesome, by the way. So let's, let's keep her around. But the, it, it comes down to something has to be done with the fire station. And it ha, and it doesn't even have to be a business. And the comment was made that, oh, we'll paint it again. But literally, the, the rock is falling off, like the masonry is falling off. I mean, it's unsafe.
Okay, so now, now, now you're taking me down another lane now. What's your name again?
Scott.
Scott, are you, are you trying to tell me that this project is predicated on another?
It's predicated on the city's partnership because.
So what if I told you I'd had, I had a lack of, I, I mean, no, but what if I, what if you, what if we said, I have a lack of confidence that you're going to get what you want from the city? Which in turn, there's no reason to approve. If, if, if you need them to move before this can move, then I'm not going to support your move because I don't think the first thing's going to move. It's not, you see what I'm saying?
The first one's hard, the first one's been.
Well, I'm just saying, like, I, if you think it's hard, I've been here for 10 years. Okay, so, okay, okay, so I'm trying to, it's not that I'm against you. But if your move is predicated on their move, then I think you might be in a grinder.
Right, um, all my mentors would agree with you 100%. Uh, yes.
So. I would say to you, then I wouldn't move, ooh, god, dog. Okay, I bought commercial property, so I feel bad because now you're in a place where you're doing inspections and paying.
We spent a lot of money.
You're going to get to a stopping point, so now you're going to get to a stopping point if you need them to move. And they're not going to move in two years. Unless it, unless, unless, if it's, unless it's something really simple.
So, so really coming before you today is to do all of the steps that we humanly possibly can for our business? And then.
You're willing to stay still? Long as you're willing to stay still.
I'm willing to stay still.
Okay.
I, I have some things I would prefer not to share in this.
I don't want to be a cog in your ways, right? So if we, you know, me personally, I can't speak, I don't want to be a cog in your way. So if you're telling me, hey, I, this is predicated on another deal, but if we can get this to a place, you're fine that, and I don't think you're going to, are you going to disturb the community too much as far as when you get to?
It's going to stay the same.
It's going to stay the same.
It will look exactly the same as it does today.
It's staying the same until.
This is the last piece of the puzzle until we can do something, because you can't build a $2 million road, I mean, it's going to be a $2 million building, um, and have people sitting on a porch looking at a roof falling off at a fire station. So that, that's a problem. So bit off a little more than we can chew originally, that's how we like to do it, um, you know. So my comment, my official comment would be, I can wait two years. And you guys can read between the lines.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure that, that I'm not, I don't ever want to help, I don't want to ever put a business, small business owner in a bad situation knowing, you know what I mean?
The two years would be, I, I think, hon, honestly, I think it's been two and a half.
Right. So I think 36 months would be a fair.
I, that would be fair.
And maybe you ordered the plans be submitted for the project within the 36 months?
I was just going to suggest, perhaps we, maybe before, in 36 months, with a six-month extension, because we've made all this progress.
Right. And then it was just a suggestion to, we, we get, seem to get variances or rezoning properties and it sits for 10 years. And then it comes back and people want, and then this isn't in style anymore.
Oh, I know.
Your commitment is that it's going to look like this.
Right.
Similar.
Yeah.
And so that poses a problem for us later down the line. That's why we're considering, we ask that you consider some kind of timeline on development plans being submitted.
The only thing, the reason why I'm personally, I'm sorry, guys, would like to see realness out of the conditions? Because what Renee, I mean, you can speak to this, and I don't know what we can do. We've had people, and I probably shouldn't say this to you because I don't want you to be one of these people, that have agreed to conditions. And there's a building for sale right now in my district that, that was not supposed to be an auto shop, was supposed to be something more. It was an auto shop, like, and I sat here and I knew it was going to be an auto shop. And now it's for sale on Loop Net for four times as much as we gave it away to them for. And I knew we were giving our assets away, and I talked a lot of venom and talked a lot of trash. But ultimately, I couldn't stop the boys from Hamilton County making money off of me at 46th and Shaglin. Okay, and I, I personally knew, and the thing is, honestly, I personally was under NDA and couldn't speak on it. So, or, or from another situation. So that's why I'm sensitive, because I want our conditions, one of my goals is for our conditions to have teeth.
They need to make them commitments, not conditions.
Commit, yeah, and, and that, whatever.
It's a recorded, enforceable.
And I didn't know the difference, that every year I learned something different, I didn't realize the difference between conditions and commit, you know, when everything matters, right?
Yes.
So these guys were getting us.
And I'm so sorry.
So sorry.
I forgot that we received a level of remonstrance in our office. I did share it with the council. We have it, but nobody has mentioned it, so I want to read it into the record, please.
Okay.
Is that okay?
This letter is from David Addison, 6421 Ware Street. We received it yesterday, and I did forward it to the council, so you should have it in your packets. His objection to rezoning petition 25-ZON-02, 6450 Oaklandon Road. Dear members of the common council, I am writing as a concerned resident of Lawrence to formally object to rezoning petition 25-ZON-02, which seeks to rezone the vacant property located at 6450 Oaklandon Road from SU1 to C3 for the development of a multi-tenant building with the space for a restaurant and retail. This property and the proposed use raise several serious concerns for our community. One, smart parcel size and traffic congestion. The parcel is extremely limited in size, making it ill-suited for a commercial development of this nature. Oaklandon Road already struggles with congestion and traffic safety, particularly during peak hours. Adding a restaurant and retail will only intensify these issues, creating hazards and additional stress for nearby residents. Number two, sewer and stormwater infrastructure limitations. The sewer drains in this area are already undersized and require frequent flushing and cleaning. Increased development would place additional strain on the system. The stormwater system originates from Veterans Park, turns through the neighborhood behind Tam's Cafe and the former lawn and garden building across Oaklandon Road. Then it cycles back through this property into our neighborhood. Introducing a commercial development here risks overloading this fragile system, which could result in the flooding backups and long-term damage to surrounding properties. Number three, historic structure preservation. The building formerly known as the Godward Glass Studio is a historic structure that, to my understanding, is not supposed to be demolished. This property carries historical and cultural value for Lawrence. And redevelopment that disregards its preservation would strip away a meaningful part of our community's heritage. Number four, environmental and landfill history. It is well-known among long-term residents that this area was historically used as a landfill site by the railroad in the early 1900s. This raises unresolved concerns about soil stability, psych, I'm sorry, I lost my spot. Contamination and suitability for redevelopment. Any rezoning or commercial use should require a thorough environmental review before proceeding. Taken together, these, these issues demonstrate that this site is neither an appropriate nor in a sustainable location for the proposed commercial development. While I support thoughtful growth that enhances our community, this project would place undue burdens on infrastructure, public safety, environmental integrity, and neighborhood character. For this reasons, I respectfully urge the common council to deny this petition. Thank you for your attention and for your service to our community. Sincerely, David Addison, Concerned Lawrence resident.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to just clarify that we, something needs to be done about the old fire station across the street? And to make this project possible, am I understanding that?
I was the first to ask the question, I apologize.
So the fi, the old fire station across the street is the main impediment to you working on this plan? Did I understand that correctly? Because it's an eyesore and?
That would be, yes, that's one of them. It, it's really just the partnership, uh, I would say with, obviously you're also the city. So more specifically, the mayor's office. It just somehow would be nice, because, I mean, if you imagine you could, so it is multiple shops would be the way, so you could maybe have a restaurant and two-thirds of it, the steakhouse would be bigger. And then like a coffee shop on the, like a parlor house, which is downtown, is really cool. It's like very laid back kind of thing. And they're actually open through like six, but anyways, you're sitting out there on the, so from the street to the door would be concrete and there'd be a patio there. And so you could imagine seeing her turn your coffee and a shingle flies off. And, and literally was, I mean, if you've seen it literally, over on, could actually make it onto the patio.
Okay, so it's physical.
I just want it to be safe, that it's not like debris, li, literally debris flies off regularly, as those that live down there know. If, if we could just even make it safe, it doesn't have to be, you know.
Demolished.
You know, or, it doesn't have to be demolished, it doesn't, actually, I, I would like the opportunity to redevelop it sometime, keeping it the same. So there's ways you can do that. We've done deep dives into all the ways that you could maintain the current integrity of it and reinforce the steel to keep it the same facade, the same colors and everything.
So you're an engineer or something?
Uh, no, but I just, I know a lot of those.
Okay.
I just, I don't say much, I don't say much.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted clarification of that.
So I'm, it, it doesn't, it just, something needs to be done, like maybe a roof or painted, just so it's safe. It's not safe right now, that's, that's a real problem.
Thank you, Councilor Wells.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Real quick question, just to make sure that I understand. The, with the fire station being the problem, are you looking to purchase the fire station? Or are you just looking to see that it's going, or just hoping that the city's going to do something with it?
Uh, I did bring that up at the office, and that was, um, that was quickly declined. We didn't even talk price or anything like that. And then, allegedly, there was about four other people that were doing this as well. So that was shut down completely. And then I said, well, I don't have to, you know, acquire it to do the whole thing, but is, is somebody willing to partner, maybe it's a different developer, maybe? So look, you know, or even if the city wants to, you know, turn into, I know some people have mentioned online about turning it into a historical fire station. The problem is, it all comes down to money, who's right to check? That's really what it comes down to, so, um, a lot of people have a lot of good ideas, but then when it costs $100,000. Because to, to inf, to fix infrastructure of the fire station with steel, which is really the only way to do it, putting new beams in there and stuff, if you've done commercial, you know, some of you are familiar with, it's going to be wildly expensive. To the, to the point that it's almost not worth it, but I, being from the area, again, that's kind of our commitment, for, for lack of a better word, is really trying to keep the historical feel of Oaklandon. And so that would be kind of the, the idea. There's a really cool place down, just outside of Fountain Square on the other side of the highway there. It's an old fire station, and they have a nice little, like, speakeasy in there that's really cool. So if you ever get a chance, one of the coffee shops that I would like to partner with, I haven't talked to them at all, is the parlor house downstairs on, or, definitely downstairs, downtown on Ohio Street. Uh, it's, it's, it's very nice. It's very, like an Oaklandon feel, it's very local, laid back. It's not, you know, another Star, we don't need a Starbucks there, like, that would be a terrible idea, right? So, if that, a little bit of rambling, but that, if that answers your question.
Well, you mentioned the, you know, fire department, because I am aware of some of the old-time, you know, volunteer firemen, you know, that have approached me about, you know, doing some sort of a, uh, a museum for the City of Lawrence and. a mu, a museum for the city of Lawrence and, but, you know, the, the funds would probably, most likely, you know, unless we could get a grant or something, but.
Right.
Um, you know, maybe that's something you could work with the city, yeah, Renee.
We just put a brand-new roof on that, only two months ago.
Right, okay.
We just upgraded the HVAC and the water and the sanitary sewer, so all of the, I just wanted to, it seemed like it was.
So, we've made an investment in that building?
We have made an investment in the building, we just put a new roof on it two months ago. We put a whole new HVAC system in it, um, the water and the sewer have been turned on, everything's in order.
We use it for storage?
Right now, it's ordered, calling, uh, some place.
Uh, it's storage.
So, there any?
I don't mean to be.
Renee?
It's, we're being denied because it's storage.
Renee, are there any plans for that building?
We've made an investment in it now.
I'm not aware of anything.
That's fine, we can pay it. We can pay it back, doesn't matter.
So, we just poured money in a building, we have no idea what we're gonna do with it?
Councilor Wells, can you have that conversation with her afterwards? I need to get the councilor's.
Yeah.
So, we can move this on.
You talked to us as part of it, so.
All right, so the shingles are not gonna blow in the street, so then that lets me know that.
Well, they did, so that's when the roof came on.
Councilor Jennings.
Actually, that, I think that answered my question because the thought of shingles falling in my mashed potatoes beside my steak.
Right, yeah.
Is a bit of a problem.
Uh, it, it took that to get the roof replaced, yes.
Okay, um, uh, but I wanted to get some clarification on the sewer. Uh, it, it was a point brought up, I think, uh, number two, on the, on the remonstration, that it may be some sewer issues, are you guys willing to address it or hasn't been addressed? Did I, did I hear correctly?
That's what the, uh, remonstrator claimed. I checked our records from DPW, I've not had any calls about stormwater issues up there.
I can speak on that.
Okay.
Not in that lot, is what I'm saying.
Um, I, if, if the council remembers Keith.
Yeah.
Yeah, Keith, yeah.
Keith, um, so when we spoke about it before his departure, um, wh, uh, what he mentioned to me was on the north side of the train track, that's where the major issue is. And so, they're trying to figure out, uh, and Renee's familiar with that. And so, that's, that's the main issue. On the south side, it's been confirmed that it, I don't wanna say it's not an issue, but it's, it's not at max capacity. Uh, but as you mentioned, um, uh, Mr. Kramer, uh, it would either be, and that all comes through the, the EPA inspections as well as the site inspections, as well as the permits and all that kind of stuff, is that if there's not enough, then there would be underground storage. And the reason we're gonna wait on the parking lot to do that last is because we could put underground storage in there. And so, um, that has been talked about since the beginning as well.
How do you withdraw yourself from this thing when he answers the question? Okay, there you go, I'm sorry. So, if, 'cause I know that we have sewer capacity issues within the city in certain places.
Not in this area.
But not in this area, but you're saying if we did, you're, could, you would be able to, you're open to managing yourself with some, with some underground tanks and things to make yourself self, a little more self-sufficient?
That was my, that was, yeah.
So, you wouldn't overload us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Finally, prior to closing the public hearing, I would like to provide a final opportunity for petitioner and members of the public to come forward to the podium in response to any of the previous comments relating to rezoning petition 25-ZON-2 during tonight's public hearing. Please note that there will be a five-minute time limit regarding additional comments from the petitioner and a combined total time limit of five minutes on all additional comments from all members of the public speaking on rezoning petition 25-ZON-02. Anyone? Okay, I would now close the public hearing. Do councilors have any questions or comments? Okay, okay, the motion is made with any conditions?
I was, uh, I would like to propose, um, a motion to approve, um, 25-ZON-02, 6450 Oakland and Road rezoning for SU1 to C3 under the condition that they, um, agree to have their plans submitted within 36 months and that they adhere to as close as possible to the plans that they've presented today.
Okay, second?
One point of clarification, was that a condition or a commitment for that motion? A commitment will be recorded in writing.
A commitment, yes.
Okay, and Councilor Jennings, second. Thank you. Any further discussions? We will now proceed to vote. Thank you, passed, eight to zero.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Mm-hmm.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
The next item of new business tonight is proposal number two, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please read the full title of proposal number two, 2025 into the record?
Proposal number two, 2025, in ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title I, Article I, Chapter Two, Section 12 of the municipal code regarding common council approval on expenditures of professional service contracts.
Counselors, I would like to ask for your consent to consider this ordinance for adoption tonight at the same meeting that it is introduced. Okay, emotion, okay, motion and second. Thank you, um, councilors.
Just one clarification so that everybody's clear. This is the ordinance that would reduce, um, the number from the current 50,000 down to the proposed 5,000.
Okay.
Your consent this evening, if you do get the consent, would then move this to consideration for a motion.
Okay. We have to receive everyone vote? Okay, we don't have, we have a seven to. To one.
Pursuant to statute, the consent would need to have been unanimous in order to consider it this evening.
Yes.
So, you are unable to consider it for a full adoption tonight, uh, but the council can now consider with a first reading or a recommendation to committee.
If we did the first reading.
We can vote on.
You have to have unanimous vote for the first reading.
Right.
So, we could send, you could send it to committee.
We have to do it next meeting.
Okay, we will have to submit this to.
It doesn't have to go to committee.
It doesn't have to go, we just vote next time.
Yeah.
We just vote next, next council meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, table that to them. Thank you, councilors, in a turn.
Which committee are they going to?
It's not going to be going, we just vote next. It has now been introduced on first reading. We will pick, we will vote on it at next council meeting. Next, we will have, the fifth item under the new business tonight is proposal number six, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please read the full title of proposal six, 2025 into the record?
Proposal number six, 2025, in ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title Three, Article Three, Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lawrence, Indiana concerning graffiti elimination.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the common council, I'm, I am referring proposal number six, 2025, to the committee of the whole. Next, we will have questions for the administration.
I would like to ask where the administration is.
Yes, they're not here.
Good question. Okay, no one here from the administration?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Next on the agenda, citizens' comments shall be limited to three minutes. And we have William Millenoff?
I'm sorry, that was my comment earlier.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Daniel Rapp.
Daniel Rapp, 5718 Waldenwood Drive. My comments for tonight have gotta be modified because of who is and who is not present. I do have one question before I start on my three minutes. Who is remotely logged in tonight? Not only on the screen you list, who is remotely logged in?
We had some, we had some, we had some problems with technology earlier.
Carlos, is that you?
My apologies.
Okay, um, were there any problems with the?
There was problems, we, people weren't getting logged in earlier, so I don't know who's all logged in, I don't know. Nobody?
No, we have Paul Warner on there, that's the only person that's on there.
Okay, there you go, Paul Warner.
Okay, then I have to redirect my comments. If administration is not here.
Thank you.
So be it. Uh, my comment tonight is in three parts. The first one is transparency. And the audience that I'm actually aiming for is not the common council, it is the citizens of Lawrence. And I want to inform them that the Indiana State Board of Accounts did an audit on the city of Lawrence. And they have now posted their three reports out there on their webpage. So, all the citizens of Lawrence, I encourage you, go out to the Indiana State Board of Accounts and do the query for the city of Lawrence, Marion County, audit-type city, and read the audit reports. I have read the audit reports. It is interesting. I found out that the overall report is adverse and unmodified opinions. I have never seen the word adverse and unmodified in the same sentence for the report. Unmodified means it's clean. Adverse means it's bad. You cannot have something somewhat bad on a unmodified. It should have been, I thought, modified. So, I don't know what the reports really mean, I'm still studying, but they are out there for everybody to read and understand this, the calendar year for 2024 financial situation for the current administration Whitfield as to what they did. That's transparency. Now, second item, financial information being posted. I am expecting that the 2026 proposed budget get posted to the city of Lawrence webpage at the same time that the current administration gives the budget to the common council. When the common council gets it, I want the citizens of Lawrence to be able to read it. And I'm not just talking about the general budget, I'm also looking for the water proposed budget and the sewer proposed budget to be posted.
Mr. Rapp? Your three minutes are up. Your three minutes are up.
Already? Very quickly, there is also a public hearing on the budget that will have to happen during the month of October. Read the budget, show up, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you. Meeting adjourned.